Ladies and gentlemen, I will call to order this business meeting for October 21st, 2024. First, I would like to call upon Councilmember Marriott for the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance, as well as some of our helpers in the audience tonight, the Boy Scouts. Come on up, guys.
Please join me for a moment of silent reflection. And now the pledge of allegiance. And Boy Scouts, come on up to the podium and lead us in the pledge, please. And afterwards, if you'd please tell us your name, what pack you're in, and what badge you're working on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Come on up.
My name is Aaron Goodwin, and I'm with Troop 2003, currently working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge.
My name is Patrick. I'm in Troop 2003, and I'm also working on the Citizenship Merit Badge.
My name's Tyler. I'm in Troop 2003, and I'm working on Citizenship in the Community.
My name is Milo. I'm in Troop 600, and I'm working on the Citizenship Badge.
My name is Andrew, and I am in PAC 600. And I am working for the Cub Scout Citizenship Adventure thing. I don't know what it's called.
That's great! Thank you for being here with us this evening and working hard on those badges. Citizenship is very important. At least, this group would all think so. So, and thank you to the leaders of the troop as well for donating your time and your energies into these young folks. We appreciate that, too. All right. Next, Ms. Rush, will you do the roll call?
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
For the approval of the minutes on October 7th, 2024, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved. And next, we will have recognitions and communications. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Ambrose for proclamation of National Community Planning Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have someone in the audience to receive this award? Okay, come on. Come on down. Whereas October is recognized as National Community Planning Month, a time to celebrate the role of planning and building vibrant, resilient, and sustainable communities; and whereas effective community planning fosters a sense of belonging and promotes the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens; and whereas the work of planners, local governments, and community members contributes to the creation of well-designed public spaces, transportation systems, and affordable housing, enhancing our quality of life; and whereas this month offers an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of planning and to engage residents in the decision-making processes that shape our community; and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community; and whereas the city of Arvada is committed to inclusive and equitable planning practices that reflect the diverse voices and needs of our residents, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of October 2024 be designated as National Community Planning Month in Arvada and encourage all residents to participate in local planning activities and to engage in discussions about the future of our community.
Thank you. We'll do a quick photo. Thank you. Ms. Garner, would you like to quickly introduce your team? Oh, I don't think... Jessica, you want to quickly introduce your team?
I apologize. I got really excited.
Go ahead, sit back down.
We have a number of our planners here tonight. Unfortunately, a couple of them are planning manager, and one of our senior planners, Linda Hoover, were not able to attend because they're at a conference in Philadelphia. But the rest of the team here, we have a range of principal planners, all the way down to Planner One. I'm happy to introduce them, or they can come and introduce themselves if that would be better. And we really appreciate your time today.
All right. If everybody just wants to tell us your name and what you do?
Nice to see you all, guys. Again, Jeremiah Bebo, Senior Planner.
Rosalyn Thompson, Principal Planner.
Joanna Rini, Planner One.
Chris Andine, Planner Two.
Nathaniel Gonzalez, Planner One.
Jake Nichol's old planner.
And I also just wanted to say, we have lots and lots of planners that actually work for the organization, not just in the planning division. But I'll also note that Isa Patrakowska is also a planner. So is Carrie Briscoe with Aura. So we have lots and lots of talented planners that work throughout our city. So, thank you again.
Wonderful. Thank you all for your service to the city. We appreciate you greatly. And next, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Pfeiffer for the proclamation of Extra Mile Day.
Do we have somebody here to accept Extra Mile Day proclamation? Was there supposed to be somebody, Linda? Okay. All right. Well, I'll make the proclamation anyways. Whereas Arvada, Colorado is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrance exists within the entire community when it is individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in a personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Arvada, Colorado is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with a total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Arvada, Colorado is a community which chooses to shine a light on the celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Arvada, Colorado acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2024, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that November 1, 2024 be designated as Extra Mile Day. We urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organization, family, community, country, and world a better place. Dated this 21st day of October 2024, signed by the mayor and all of council.
Actually, since we have scouts in the audience, this seems kind of perfect. Would our scouts be willing to come up and accept the award?
Sure.
All right. Come on! And of course, their leaders, please. Talk about folks who go the extra mile.
Can we go up here? Can we go up here? I don't know.
Come on up here. Sure.
The bubble go the extra mile?
Bubble.
That was perfect. Thank you all so much. All right. We have no presentations this evening, so I will now open the public comment portion of this evening's agenda on the three-minute limit. This is for public comment. That is not on any item of this evening's agenda. If you are here to comment on items for hearings, that is great, and we will welcome you at that time during those hearings. We have a few rules with public comment. The first is that you say your name and your address when you come up to get public comment. And we also encourage folks to keep their comments directed to council. This is our opportunity to hear from you. We don't respond. If you need response, we will follow back up with you after the fact. But this is just your opportunity to talk to us, so we always request that comments be made to us and not perhaps at other folks in chambers, et cetera. So first, I will call up Alex Prey.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Alex Prey. I'm a member of the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee and an engineer working in the electric utility industry. To be clear, I don't work for Xcel, so I'm not representing their interests tonight. I'm here to offer professional perspective on some points raised in the September presentation regarding the Climate Action and Sustainability Plan presented by Lotus. Specifically, Councilmember Davis mentioned electrification efforts and the removal of natural gas infrastructure should be focused on new construction before our older neighborhoods. With their overhead electrical infrastructure and natural gas appliances, that may not be well-suited for this transition. While this is a valid concern, as we all know, there's limited space left in Arvada for new residential development. So focusing solely on new construction would not have the same impact as including existing homes. Like Councilmember Davis, I live in a post-war neighborhood here in Arvada, 6330 Reed Street, forgot my address there. And my 60-plus-year-old home has a 100-amp electrical service. This service is fully capable of supporting electrification of my home, including a heat pump with heating and cooling, heat pump water heater, and even an electric vehicle charger without any service upgrade. Many older electrical systems were designed to accommodate far more power than today's high-efficiency appliances and lighting require. In most cases, there is no urgent need to upgrade or underground electrical distribution systems to enable electrification of existing homes. While undergrounding could provide some benefits in the future, delaying progress towards decarbonization to wait for these upgrades, particularly when relying on Xcel for infrastructure changes, doesn't align with our sustainable goals and timelines necessary. In the last month, I had the opportunity to attend a few conferences of North American Energy Utilities, and I learned of various programs about replacing, or a New York utility instead of replacing aging natural gas infrastructure, allocating those funds towards electrifying homes that are served by that infrastructure. And in Colorado, Holy Cross Energy and the city of Vail are planning to install ground source heat pumps to replace natural gas snowmelt systems, an endeavor far more complex than electrifying single-family homes. The electrification of home heating is practical. It's a practical and achievable goal. And whether through utility-led programs or through the Colorado Energy Office's geothermal energy grant program, as mentioned in the Climate Action and Sustainability Plan, we can provide and promote practical, cost-effective steps towards electrification and decarbonization now instead of later. I know my time is up, but this transition will be gradual, with tens of thousands of homes in Arvada.
Mr. Prey.
But I think it's crucial that our city's plans look to educate homeowners about opportunities they have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. All right. Deborah L. Steguloff. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Steguloff. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of PSR Colorado, the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, regarding the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail. By way of introduction, I'm a PhD biomedical research scientist. Prior to my recent retirement, I was a professor in the Department of Molecular Physiology and Biophysics and a member of the Holden Comprehensive Cancer Center at the University of Iowa Carver College of Medicine. Following state and federal safety guidelines, I worked with radioactive compounds for all of my scientific career, and therefore I can't be accused of being phobic of radioactivity. The Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge has been documented to be contaminated with plutonium, a radionuclide that is a known carcinogen. It takes about 24,000 years until a given particle of plutonium loses only one-half of its radioactive energy. Therefore, the soil on the refuge will remain a danger to public health essentially forever. When outside of the body, the alpha radiation emitted by plutonium poses no health risks because it can't penetrate through the skin. However, if soil dust containing plutonium is inhaled, ingested, or taken up by a cut in the skin, it remains lodged in one's body for the person's lifetime, continuously emitting alpha radiation. This results in severe DNA damage in nearby cells, thereby increasing the person's risk of developing cancer years later. It's known that high winds from the west frequently prevail over the Rocky Flats Superfund Site and Wildlife Refuge, generating airborne dust. And it's been shown recently that air collected downwind of the refuge during the high-wind event contained plutonium. As stated by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, quote, "Breathing plutonium contaminated air is the most dangerous way to be exposed to plutonium. If you know or suspect that plutonium has been released to the air, you should leave the area immediately." Unquote. We urge you to try and stop the Rocky Mountain Greenway from being completed. If completed, the Greenway would continue to normalize the dangerous plutonium contamination of the refuge, promote greater recreation on the refuge, and would cause plutonium to be transported outside of the refuge into Arvada and elsewhere. Please follow Westminster's lead in their historic decision recently to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway IGA and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laura Sandusky.
Hi, I'm Laura Sandusky. I live at 6235 Xavier Court. I'm part of the Arlington Meadows opposition to the homeless shelter. Some key talking points: the community impact emphasizes potential negative effects on the local property values and the businesses around the area, arguing that the shelter could deter investments and economic growth. Safety concerns raises concerns about increased crime rates and safety issues that may arise in the vicinity of the shelter, stressing the needs for more security and environments for the residents and who is going to take care of this for our children in the neighborhood. Zoning issues: discussion whether the proposed location complies with zoning laws and whether the community is adequately equipped to handle the increased population because it will increase the population and the neighborhood. There are local schools in the district, as well as a daycare, and there are safety concerns there. Success stories elsewhere: do you have legitimate success stories that this is a positive impact in a neighborhood environment for our residents, that are seniors and children? Alternate solutions: where are the proposed alternate strategies for addressing homelessness that may be more effective, such as outreach programs and traditional transition housing that you already have in place with Arvada? Long-term impact: where is the long-term visibility of the shelter and its effectiveness in solving homelessness? Advocating for more sustainable solutions. Also, I know that you wanted to move this out of Old Town because of the businesses and the library, so there's a public safety issue that is here emphasizing that open drug use can be posed as a significant safety risk, especially in areas frequented by children. There's a park just up the street, and I'm concerned because I have children. Impact on families: it highlights how the presence of drug use may deter families from using the library in Old Town. It's going to deter families from using the public park that's right down the street from us. And those are just some of the concerns that I have, and we're opposing this. And a lot of our neighbors have no idea about this. I have been boots-on-the-ground, passing out flyers, doing petitions, and they were unaware that this shelter was going down the street. And this is several months into your proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Renee Cornell.
Good evening. This is Renee Cornell. I live on West 64th Drive, and I here, again, opposing the Navigation Center. You're proposing on West 60th. Location for this Navigation Center is wrong. When we speak of the homeless, we speak of different people. We speak of homeless, families, abuse, drugs, mental, all sorts of homeless people. Putting them under one roof, wrong. If I were a parent with children, I would be very uncomfortable being in the same building with someone that may have drug problems or mental problems. This is really a wrong idea to do. Also, families need to be with families. A location that would be separated from other homeless, not in a family, separate the three, the four different types. Because it's just like homeless, it's not just everyone's families. Everyone's one person. Homeless are all different kinds of people with personalities and needs, and that's why we need the resources for them as well. I've been approached in the parking lot in the streets. We should have, we should not have one large building. Our home is our refuge. We don't want to be approached by a homeless person sitting on our front porch asking for money. We need to feel safe in our homes. Because one homeless man on our front yard came to us very angry because we wouldn't give him a scooter located in our front yard, and there's the Sun West 60th. We asked him to leave. He would not. He was very angry, and it was very scary. So there was no time to call the police. So the city of Arvada needs to protect their citizens. They really do. We're hard-working citizens, and we deserve the protection. We trust you, and we hope that you will not leave this location for a homeless shelter. This location is inviting trouble. Please look at the location and leave our neighborhood alone. Safety will also be a problem. Homeless will have difficulty crossing West 60th. 60th is very busy. I cannot imagine a person crossing that street at night. We would like to tour the building there and possibly set time to look at the budget from the city of Arvada and see what kind of problems that you guys are facing with this building, because I know there will have to be renovation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Tiffany Munoz.
Tiffany Munoz, 6275 Xavier Court in Arlington Meadows. At the end of my speech, I will highlight as many key resources that are currently available as time will allow for both residents in Jefferson and Adams County, each providing essential life-changing services. Instead of creating new facilities, we should focus on utilizing these established programs, which already cover a wide range of needs, such as emergency shelters offering day, night, and 24/7 accommodations, including severe weather shelters and transitional housing that provides stability for up to a year; programs offering hotel vouchers, shuttles, and RTD tokens, showers, food, toiletries, and more; cash assistance for foreclosure prevention, rent payments, utilities, and eviction support; assistance for those relocating in or out of state, including housing support; job readiness programs, trade training, resume assistance, interview preparation, and help with job applications and connections; specialized support for new and expecting mothers, sober living, financial literacy, mental health care, and many more. Arvada has made a costly and misguided decision by allocating over $6 million to a new facility when we already have more than 80 established services operating in just our region. These resources are not just available. They are functional, widespread, and they're already making a difference. We do not need a Navigation Center. We need a smarter approach to utilizing the programs we already have. Rather than funneling millions of dollars into redundant facilities, forcing those in need to move from one place to another, we should focus on strengthening and funding the programs that we already have in place. A better solution is making this information more accessible. Why not every resource available bookmarked at the Arvada and Jefferson County libraries? Why not place a computer in City Hall where residents can easily search for and connect with services? We could streamline access further with a Google forum that asks residents a few questions and then directs them to the right programs based on their needs. For those who may struggle with technology, city staff could assist in navigating these resources, ensuring that every resident has access. Pretend Mayor Mormon, you mentioned your concern about the over 100-plus residents in your district facing eviction. These programs are not hypothetical solutions. They exist today. They can help keep families in their homes now rather than waiting for them to lose everything only to place them in a shelter years and millions of dollars later. We can prevent homelessness before it starts by utilizing and supporting what we already have. We need to make smart fiscal decisions for our community. Let's fund the current programs that are serving our residents effectively. Let's focus on prevention rather than reaction. Arvada has the opportunity to grow into a strong, prosperous community, one that lifts people up and ensures that help is available when it's needed. To illustrate just how robust all of our systems are, I currently have these, plus there's over 300 resources on the 211 website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Morgan.
Jim Morgan, 7551 Oak Street. It does not appear from your strategic plan on homelessness that you considered any unintended consequences for using the Early College Academy building for your homeless shelter navigation center, or what you would do to prevent those consequences from occurring. Consideration for unintended consequences is an important step in any venture, and your homelessness consultant should have included it in his research and report. What are the unintended consequences of the city's actions in regards to using the Early College Academy for a Navigation Center shelter? Remember, the objective is not to consider what you would do when you encounter these issues. It is what you would do to preclude the occurrence of these issues and without any additional cost to the taxpayer. You should note, these items and more would apply to any Arvada location. If the city council indeed were to use the Early College of Arvada facility for housing the homeless, the following would need to be considered and addressed: decrease in local property values, increase in vandalism, increase in theft, increase in break-ins, increase in personal assaults on area residents, increase in trash and filth in the neighborhood, increase in disease in the area, stress on local infrastructure such as streets, water, and safety, theft from the Navigation Center itself, abuse of property and personnel in the Navigation Center, use of illicit drugs in and about the Navigation Center, inability to house all of the homeless individuals at the center, increase in 24-hour encampments and presence of homeless individuals in the neighborhood around the center, increase in the homeless population in Arvada in general because of the presence of the Navigation Center, unanticipated costs for material replacement, employee turnover, employee training, et cetera, invasion of illegal migrants into the Navigation Center. These are just a few of the items I thought of. A team of interested individuals would likely generate more potential issues. This and other questions need to be addressed before the city proceeds in any homelessness direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Jettie Krantz. Welcome, Ms. Krantz.
My name is Jettie Krantz. I live at 5030 West 60th Avenue, directly across from Cline Credit Union, which is directly next door to the Early College of Arvada building. I'm not speaking about that tonight. That'll be another night. Tonight, I'm here to address something that Councilmember Pfeiffer misspoke about in his closing remarks at last council meeting. He said, quote, "Over 54% of our city has said we need to address the homeless. We need to do something," end quote. I'm going to grant you some grace and say you misspoke because you've probably thrown this number around a lot without including our sample size. 54% of your sample size from the 2023 community survey said you need to do something. Not 54% of Arvada. You want people to take you seriously. You need to speak correctly. So I'm going to correct it right now. 2023 survey, you had 1,200 people reply. It's an oddly even number. Don't know why it's even, but it's odd. U.S. Census Bureau estimates the city of Arvada had a population of 121,414 people as of July 1, 2023. 54% of that would have been over 65,000 people. Now, if over 65,000 people are saying, "Do something about this," absolutely, do something about it. But you had less than 1% of the city's population saying, "Do something." And instead of... And instead of doing what I think is common sense and saying, "Okay, they're telling us to do something, a sample's telling us to do something," what do they want us to do? Send out another survey, give people options, get bigger input. Don't just say, "Well, gosh, we gotta do something," and throw many at a problem. It's fiscally irresponsible, and considering what you guys are talking about later, it's not smart and it's not a good look. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment this evening? Please, this gentleman and then... So please, name and address for the public record as well. Uh, yes. I'll take it. Thank you. I'll give it all, I'll give it to her. Thank you.
My name is Justin Lang. I live at forty-seven-thirty West Sixty-third Avenue. I'm here with the Arlington Meadows neighborhood. I'm trying to keep my emotions out of this. I just want to speak kind of about the last meeting we had on October seventh. A woman stood up here and said, "The most likely demographic that is going to be experienced homelessness is single mothers." And Jerome, I don't know if most of us know him, and you guys got introduced to him a couple of weeks ago, he is really passionate about childcare. And I was thinking over the last couple of weeks, why is it that single mothers are most likely to become homeless? Probably because they're having to pick between going to work or taking care of their children. And I just wanted you guys all to think about that, not trying to use her words against her, but just simple facts. You know, I've got, I've got an eleven-month-old daughter. I'm always going to pick taking care of her, even if it meant sleeping in the streets. But here's the deal. You guys have a building? Let's like trim off some of that stress to a single mother. That can be the difference between, okay, my children are a safe place, I can go job hunt, I can go get that income, build the credit score so I can qualify for some housing. I just thought it was something that I've been thinking about for the last couple of weeks, and I just want to bring that back to the council's attention. Bob, you mentioned that you worked for CDOT. Your words were, you were, you know what they do. They destroy things. Like, I just, by bottom of my heart, just like, think about what is, think about the facts, think about, Bob, what you said. This just isn't a great location for a homeless shelter. Let's try to like, just keep the people who are on the, that just need daycare to keep that job. Jetty, some of the other comments here were focusing on the people who are almost going to be evicted. Sell this building for seven million dollars and help some people who are already in their houses, who are safe, keep their jobs. That's, keep their houses and keep their jobs. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. There was another in chambers? Name and address for the public record.
Mindy Moore, one-one-five-seven-zero West Seventieth Place. And I've, I've come before council many times over the years, and many times I've said that I'm really proud of our city. We have a city team that works incredibly hard, and I know as council members, you have to make some very, very tough decisions over the years, weighing the facts, and you don't make everyone happy, you get a lot of anger. I'm just here to say I'm somewhat ashamed that our council members have, some have conveniently forgotten that they committed to creating a navigation campus with shelter in North Jeffco in Arvada. Our neighboring city Lakewood is honoring their commitment, working with Recovery Works. It's not a twenty-four-seven shelter yet, but they're working on that. So if Lakewood can do it, and if Lakewood can show compassion and help those who are insecure, I think Arvada can do it. I, I, I think there are a lot of options and ways to make this something that's successful, but I think we have to honor our commitments and not backtrack or backpedal. And I'm, I'm just going to stop there because I will get too emotional. Thank you. And the data are there to showing that this is a problem, and it's not going to get any better. As rents are increasing, people are being priced out of their homes, and there, there is a reason why we're seeing more homelessness than we did ten years ago. And if the city does nothing, then you're just going to have, again, Mission Arvada helping people because that's their calling. People are showing up, and it's not going to go away, and it's not going to leave Old Town, it's going to expand. And Mission Arvada is doing it without any help from our city, which is really a shame. They're now stepping up to do extreme and severe weather sheltering because the severe weather shelter network has closed. So Mission Arvada, on top of everything they do as a day shelter, is now begging for donations and volunteer hours to run an extreme weather shelter while we have an empty building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give comment? Ms. Rush, is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I will close this portion of the public comment of this evening's agenda, and I will open us up for new business. We have seven items on this evening's consent agenda, and so I will ask for you all to bear with me while I run through these. I'm opening the items for R-24-013, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for rights-of-way work permits and services pursuant to Chapter Seventy-eight, public improvements of the city Arvada code, R-24-104, a resolution adopting the fee schedule for site disturbance permits and inspections pursuant to Chapter Fifty, irrigation and drainage of the Arvada City Code, R-24-105, a resolution adopting the amended administrative fee schedule for building safety division permits and services pursuant to Chapter Eighteen, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code, R-24-106, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for land use pursuant to Chapter Seventy-four, planning and development of the Arvada City Code, R-24-107, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Dominic Madril for the property located at seven-thousand Colorado Highway Ninety-three, Arvada, Colorado, eight-zero-four-zero-three, also known as the Reservoir House, R-24-108, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Jesse Hart for the property located at seventy-two-ninety-five Kipling Street, Arvada, Colorado, also known as the Shaft House, R-24-109, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement be and, I think it's supposed to be by, and between the city of Arvada and Colton Daniels for the property located at seventy-six-fifty Indiana Street, Arvada, Colorado, eight-zero-four-zero-three, also known as Meridian Farm. Councilmember Faray.
I'll make the motion.
Absolutely.
All right, I move that R-24-0, or 103 through R-24-019 be approved.
Councilmember Maria, you wish to speak?
Yeah, I think, Ms. Faray, you said R-24-...
One-zero-three.
Through...
One-zero-nine.
Yeah, that's not what you said. So anyway, I just want to let you get that correct, and then we'll vote.
Is that right? Okay. R-24-103 through R-24-109.
Thank you very much. That passes seven to zero. All right, we have two resolutions on this evening's agenda. They are, I will open it up now for R-24-110, a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and county of Jefferson for routine maintenance and snow removal. And I believe, Ms. Rhodes, you have this item.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So this amendment to an existing intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County outlines additional street maintenance and snow removal responsibilities for both parties. The amendment outlines county maintenance on city streets and city maintenance in unincorporated areas of the county. The city of Arvada collaboratively participates in these types of IGAs to facilitate effective street maintenance and snow removal operations. These agreements were crafted and continue to be amended to provide services to the community in these unincorporated areas within the city boundaries to better serve our citizens. The streets identified in this amendment are in addition to those in the existing IGA. The Arvada team recommends that city council approve R-24-110, a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and county of Jefferson for routine maintenance and snow removal.
All right, Councilmember Davis.
I'd like to make the motion.
I see no other lights.
I move that R-24-110, a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and county of Jefferson for routine maintenance and snow removal be approved.
All right, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I will open R-24-111, a resolution authorizing an amendment and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Jefferson County Law Enforcement Authority, the county of Jefferson by and behalf of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, and Golden to establish a collective special weapons and tactics team. Mr. Jacks, you have this one.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson, members of council. As you may be aware, since nineteen ninety-six, the Arvada Police Department, or during that year, we joined with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and at that time, the city of Golden, who, and we were later joined also by the city of Edgewater, under the terms of an intergovernmental agreement to form the Jefferson County Regional SWAT Team. This resolution approves an amended and restated IGA, which clarifies a number of terms, incorporates previous amendments, and basically aligns the current, the past IGA with current SWAT Team practices. The city team is recommending that council approve R-24-111, resolution authorizing, as the mayor said, an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Jefferson County Law Enforcement Authority, county of Jefferson, by and on behalf of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, and Golden to establish a collective special weapons and tactics team.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Davis, you head it first.
I'd like to make the motion.
I see no other lights.
I move that R-24-111, a resolution authorizing an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Jefferson County Law Enforcement Authority and the county of Jefferson by and on behalf of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, and Golden to establish a collective special weapons and tactics team be approved.
All right, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we have no first readings this evening, so I will open it up to the ratification of the Arvada Economic Development Association board members. We have quite a few this evening, so we'll be taking them round robin style, and I will be opening that to you for the first nomination there. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Did you have a presentation you wanted to say? You started getting up, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Apologies. All right.
I saw you move, so I wasn't sure.
Come on up, Ms. Petrikowska.
Good evening, city council. My name's Isa Petrikowska. I'm the Economic Development Manager and the Executive Director of AIDA. And on behalf of the AIDA staff and board, I want to thank you for your continued support for AIDA and for the efforts we take in ensuring businesses and their needs are met for all of Arvada businesses. As you are likely aware, AIDA is a quasi-governmental entity. We're fully funded by the city. We have three, three full-time city employees and one shared communications manager, which provides oversight for all of community and economic development. In addition to this, we also have a five-oh-one-C-six nonprofit Board of Directors made up of seventeen voting members and seven ex officio members to manage and allocate our funding that we receive from council on business programming. Some of this includes our exterior improvement grant, where we annually allocate over a hundred thousand dollars in funding towards small businesses and capital investment to their physical property, Arvada Manufacturing Initiative, which we just presented an update on to you a few weeks ago, and various economic impact grants that we pursue to bring jobs and investment into the city. So in accordance with our bylaws and our, in accordance with our bylaws, our voting members serve three-year terms with the ability to ratify and extend their terms at the end of the three years upon the city council's approval. It is for this reason that we are in front of you here tonight. So I just want to bring up our AIDA Board President, Paul Duncan, to say a few words on behalf of the board.
Welcome, Mr. Duncan.
Thanks, Isa, and thank you, city council, for your continued support of the mission of AIDA and our business community. I've served the Board of AIDA for the past two years, and I started with the Board in two thousand and ten, and served the retention committee in two thousand and five up to two thousand and ten. During that period, I was president and owner of Pi Consulting Engineering here in Arvada on Joyce Drive. The Arvada Economic Development Association bylaws provide nomination of certain directors of AIDA and then who are subject to city council approval. At its board meeting on September tenth, AIDA unanimously approved to appoint six candidates for renewing three-year terms of service to the Board of Directors, including Jeremy Gregory, Alicia Svaldi, Mark Emboden, Gillian McCarron, Scott Markham, and Ken Feldman. We also appoint Vanessa Kendrick, Shelley Flood, Ben Lawrence, and Lindsay Reiner to the three new three-year terms to the city of council for approval and ratification. We respectfully requested Arvada's city council formally ratify the reappointment of the board members who are currently serving and the new three-year terms for starting January twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. I think you have all their names, so I'll save that time for you guys. Thank you.
We do. Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan, and Ms. Petrikowska. Mr. Pfeiffer, kick us off.
Yeah, just before I start, real quick, they all expire at the same time? They're not staggered? I thought they would have been staggered.
We had some reappointed...
Yeah, unfortunately.
A little slower walking these days. For the reappointed, we had a little bit of a shift, so we did have some that expired in twenty-twenty-three, but because we had change in leadership at the time with Daniel Riley rolling off and me coming on, we kind of missed that window of ratification in twenty-twenty-three, so we're ratifying all of them in twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, so they, they do all expire in twenty-seven, then?
Correct.
Okay. All righty, let's kick it off, then. I move that Jeremy Gregory be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that, oh, we vote each one? Okay. Got to vote each.
Does it all be approved and ratified at the moment?
Yeah, yeah, we're doing just the round robin, we're going to do them all in one motion. So, correct. I move that Alicia Svaldi be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Mark Emboden be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Gillian McCarron be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Scott Markham be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Move that Ken Feldman be reappointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
And I move that Vanessa Kendrick be appointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Shelley Flood be appointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Ben Lawrence be appointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
I move that Lindsay Reiner be appointed to a three-year term on the AIDA Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and be approved and ratified.
All right, if all of council will cast their votes for all nominees. Thank you very much. That passes seven to zero. Congratulations to the entire AIDA Board, and thank you for your service to this community. All right, next, I'm going to open our public hearings for this evening's agenda, and first I'm going to open up CB twenty-four-013, An Ordnance Amending Various Sections of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water users' rates and bimonthly service charges, ordinance number forty-eight-seventy-nine. Ms. Israel, I believe you have this item.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the ordinance before the city council will adjust water rates and bimonthly service fees for twenty-twenty-five. The Utilities Department is proposing to increase in-city, single-family water volumetric rates by ten percent and bimonthly service fees by four dollars per bimonthly bill for an overall revenue increase of eleven-point-two-nine percent for twenty-twenty-five. This will increase the typical in-city, single-family water bill by seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents per year, or thirteen dollars and two cents per bimonthly bill, or six dollars and fifty-one cents per month. Over the course of four workshops in twenty-twenty-four, the city team presented city council with foundational information about utility financial strategies, presented a series of revenue increase scenarios for the water, sewer, and stormwater funds, and requested direction about how to best provide assistance to customers who are struggling to pay their utility bill. At the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four city council workshop, the city team presented three revenue increase scenarios for each of the funds, water, sewer, and stormwater, for updating rates and bimonthly service fees for twenty-twenty-five. At the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four city council workshop, the city team received direction about which of these scenarios to bring back to city council for adoption on October seventh for first reading. council for adoption on October seventh for first reading. Additional revenue from these adjustments enables major reinvestment and capacity building projects to proceed in accordance with the schedule laid out in the master planning work directed in the city council's strategic plan. Other additions to the two thousand and twenty-five budget include increasing personnel costs and vendor services. With the increase, the total new revenue would be an estimated four million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for a total water revenue forecast of forty-three million and fifty-five thousand dollars. This work supports the infrastructure priority area of the city council's strategic plan, specifically Infrastructure Work System Service Number One, which is provide the community with a safe, resilient, high-quality water supply, drainage system, wastewater disposal, and solid waste management services for full city build-out as defined by the comprehensive plan. The city team's recommendation for the two thousand and twenty-five adjustments to the water rate and fee schedule also aligns with the principle that the city maintains utility rates at the lowest practical levels. Additionally, this revenue from existing customers is not used to pay for growth-related projects. System development charges assessed to new development will pay for growth-related work. For customers struggling to pay their bills, we offer hardship credits, budget billing, and payment arrangements. In the year ahead, at council's direction, we are expanding promotion of these programs in partnership with the Community Table and the city's resident rebate program. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB twenty-four dash zero-one-three.
Thank you, Ms. Israel. I will open up to council questions. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I'll see if there's any questions, but I like to reserve the motion.
The motion is yours. Are there any questions or increased discussion on the item? See no lights. Mr. Pfeiffer, it's yours.
All right, I move that Council Bill twenty-four dash zero-one-three, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one-oh-two Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water user rates and bimonthly service charges be approved on final reading, numbered forty-eight seventy-nine, and ordered published by title only.
All right. And is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to give public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. Mr. Marriott, you wish for discussion?
I have a comment to make. So, my comment is this. I'll be voting yes on this. I have heard from a number of Arvada residents, the hardship this puts them under. So this is a difficult thing, and I think our, our idea of offering people who truly have a hard time some help with paying their utility bills is a good thing. I don't think it's significant. I think the reality is, is that the council and the Utilities Division needs to endeavor to provide plentiful water at the lowest cost possible always, and that that's really the solution here. I will compliment the city team here for providing us with good, realistic options for us to choose from in making this difficult decision. And I think of the options that we had to choose from, this was by far the best option. So this is why I will be voting yes on this item.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon and Councilmember Pfeiffer, I need your votes. Oh, Mr. Pfeiffer, you beat Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon by half a second for a comment.
Okay, I just, I just want to echo Councilmember Marriott's comments. I mean, you know, Sharon, we, we, we beat you up and your team for a lot on this, but you know, it's because we have to be thoughtful and think through it, and, and we appreciate the diligence and the perseverance of the team to answer our questions, and even through challenging times, because it's been a couple of years, and every year, it's like a rinse and repeat for you. You get back in the arena and do it again. So, appreciate, I think you're providing the right data for us to make these decisions, and, and it's unfortunate, you know, the infrastructure is, you know, degrading faster than we would like it to, but it is what it is. It only has a certain lifespan, and I appreciate the fact that you are diligent enough to bring it to our attention, and we're here to support you as well. So, thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. I just want to echo Councilmember Pfeiffer's comments on the team's work on this and all the education that you provided to us. It's been really, really helpful, not just this year, but in pastures that I've served on, you know, the past couple of years that I've been on council, in which you provided this. So I greatly appreciate that, and I do get some questions from constituents about this every year, and I appreciate also the assistance you provided in answering those questions. But it is, you know, something that I do not take lightly each year when we have to think about raising rates, and, you know, it's, it's very helpful, all the data you provide to show not only the need, but how we fit in with other cities. I think that's really an important reminder that we're still maintaining that middle of the road, the middle of the group of all our neighboring cities in this effort, and that we're, I think, you know, we just, it's that balancing act. We can't kick this down the road, and if we were to do that, then the increases would be significantly higher than what we're talking about now, because these costs aren't going to go away, and they're going to only increase. So I just really appreciate all the team's work on this, and, you know, I will continue to work to try to communicate all that information to our residents as they, as they do rightly so ask about this, because it's a really important thing that hits their pocketbooks. So I really appreciate all that, and will, and will continue to, to make these difficult decisions, which we know is, is the long-term and most sustainable use of our funds for these important assets. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Pfeiffer, you want another crack at it?
Yeah, I do, because I just spent a thousand miles, the last two, two and a half days this weekend, I drove a thousand miles to Colorado with my family. And we went to a lot of places, Four Corners, Telluride, Durango, you name it, we went there. My family said they would not drink the water, because it was always horrible. It's not our Arvada water. And so they would drink out of the top, and they would, mm-mm, put it down, say, I'll take a bottle of water. It's not our Arvada water. So just compliments that we do have something special here in Arvada when it comes to the quality as well. So it just made me remind of what my family was saying around the dinner tables while we're on our trip.
Absolutely. All right. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Israel and team. Next, we have CB twenty-four dash zero-one-four, an ordinance amending Section one-oh-two dash two-oh-six of Chapter one-oh-two Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to the wastewater users' rates and bimonthly service charges, and Section one-oh-two dash three-five-five of Chapter one-oh-two Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to stormwater users' rates, ordinance number four-eight-eight-zero. Ms. Israel?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Let me start by saying how much I appreciate them by behalf of myself and the team that worked incredibly hard to bring these ordinances to you. We appreciate the kind words. This ordinance is similar, but different, in that it focuses on the wastewater and stormwater rates and fees. So the ordinance before the city council will adjust wastewater rates and bimonthly service fees and stormwater rates for two thousand and twenty-five. The Utilities Department is proposing to increase in-city, single-family wastewater rates by fourteen point five percent and bimonthly service fees by two dollars per bimonthly bill for an overall revenue increase of fifteen point four percent in two thousand and twenty-five. This will increase the typical in-city, single-family sewer bill by fifty-seven dollars and twelve cents per year. That is nine dollars and fifty-two cents per bimonthly bill, or four dollars and seventy-six cents per month. The proposed increase to stormwater rates is thirteen point seven-five percent. This will increase the typical in-city, single-family stormwater bill by eight dollars and seventeen cents per year. That is a dollar thirty-six per bimonthly bill, or sixty-eight cents per month. I won't repeat everything I said under Item ten-A about water rates and fees, but we did follow the same process for sewer and stormwater as we did for water. That is, over the course of those four workshops, in two thousand and twenty-four, the city team presented city council with foundational information and provided options and requested your direction. Additional revenue from these adjustments really does enable us to make major reinvestments and capacity building projects, just similar to water, in accordance with the schedule laid out in master planning work directed by the city council's strategic plan. The estimated increase in revenue for the wastewater utility, wastewater utility fund is four million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-five, with a total forecasted revenue of twenty-one million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And for the stormwater enterprise fund, the total new revenue is estimated at five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, with a total revenue of four million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Again, as with the water rate and fee ordinances, this works does support directly the city council's strategic plan in the infrastructure priority area of providing the community with safe, resilient, high-quality water supply, drainage system, wastewater disposal, and solid waste management services, and that we maintain utility rates at the lowest practical levels. So with that said, the city, the city of Arvada team recommends the city council approve CB twenty-four dash oh-one-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to give public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Ms. Davis.
Are there any other lights?
There are no other lights.
Then I'd like to make the motion.
You have it.
I move that CB twenty-four dash zero-one-four, an ordinance amending Section one-oh-two dash two-oh-six of Chapter one-oh-two Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water users' rates and bimonthly service charges, and Section one-oh-two dash three-five-five of Chapter one-oh-two Utilities of the city, of the Arvada City Code pertaining to stormwater users' rates be approved on final reading numbered four-eight-eight-zero, and ordered published by title only. And I'd also like to make a comment.
Please.
Thank you so much. I think what was especially helpful for those who can't picture what's going on were all the maps and all of the areas where we were having troubles. These underground utilities are so valuable to the city. I always say, if you, if you want to do anything bad, make, just see if people can't flush their toilets. And so wastewater is so very important and crucial to the city, as is drinking water. And then what a lot of people don't understand in Colorado is our stormwater often flows untreated to our drinking water systems, our pre-treatment systems. So it's really important that we take care of our stormwater and make it as, as pollutant-free as possible. And so I'm just very excited about what Arvada is doing to stay ahead of the curve in, in keeping our, our water resources clean, but also making sure that we are handling our wastewater in a very responsible way. So thank you, Ms. Israel. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes, and please send your thanks to the team. And also, I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Gray and Ms. Baumgartner were willing to come and speak, and then once I, I kind of feebly went through the explanation, the folks were very happy. So thank you so much for providing that information and your willingness to meet with us in person.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so on this, this, these two items, I'll be voting no. And the, the reason is, I believe, that the council is raising these rates higher than necessary at this time. So once again, just like in the previous item, congratulations, compliments to the staff for providing us with some realistic options for, for how to financially meet the needs of our, of our enterprise funds here. However, I think the council's making a bad decision on this one, in an effort to potentially have a little lower total cost down the road. The, the cost is going up to end users more than is necessary at this point. And while it is a small amount, I think for everybody who's on the edge, a small amount's significant. And I don't see at this time enough benefit in, in, in doing that to be, to be on board with it. So I will be voting no.
Thank you. With that, all votes are cast. That passes six to one, with Councilmember Marriott be a no vote. So with that, I will move us into CB twenty-four dash zero-one-five. And before I read the item, I would just want some quick clarity from Ms. Morris, since we do have a few, a few Rs underneath the CB. Do you want me to take them all separately, or would you like me to combine them all?
You can combine the public hearing for the ordinance with the staff reports on the resolutions. The only thing I would ask is that you vote separately on each of the individual items. So, once you get done with the discussion, just have a separate motion and vote on each of those resolutions and ordinances.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Then I will go ahead and read the ordinance and the resolutions. So first, now I'm going to open CB twenty-four dash zero-one-five, an ordinance approving funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, ordinance number forty-eight forty-one, Resolution twenty-four dash one-one-two, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, R twenty-four dash one-one-three, a resolution adopting the two thousand and twenty-five Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocating for specific projects in two thousand and twenty-five, and R twenty-four dash one-one-four, a resolution adopting the pay plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Haley, I believe you're introducing this item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, city council. I will introduce the ordinance item, and then the expertise of Mr. Archer, our finance director, as well as our team will be here to answer questions for you. I want to start by saying, Arvada's team did presentations of the budget, starting with you all, in June of, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, when finance and CMO teams presented the revised tenure models, along with a detailed review of current and previous revenue estimates and updates to the tenure CIP model. On September sixth, the budget document was provided to the council and posted to the city's website. The budget document includes the city manager's transmittal letter, which provides an overview of the budget document, as well as the major changes and issues associated with the proposed expenditure of over three hundred and sixty-six million dollars of public funds. On August twenty-sixth, after several workshops throughout the year, as you learned from Ms. Israel, members of the Infrastructure Work System, along with the finance team, presented recommendations for funding of the city's water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. On September twenty-third, a budget workshop was held, which included what is being proposed for funding, what's not funded, and what areas need to be addressed in the upcoming years. The city manager's office and the finance teams facilitated the presentation in collaboration with the work system leaders, who were available to provide additional details and information associated with the proposed changes. The two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six proposed biannual operating and capital budget was released to the city council and the Arvada community on September sixth. Information within the proposed biannual budget provides an overview of proposed allocations of resources and priorities identified by the city council and team members, as well as the relationship of each work system to the strategic plan, including milestones and performance measures. A complete summary of the budget by section and funding priorities associated with the proposed budget is provided in the city manager's budget transmittal letter dated August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I've shared these details with all of you as a reminder that we have had extensive discussions with you over these past several months regarding this ordinance, and to also demonstrate, of course, the extensive and important work that our city team is committed to every year to do this in order to prepare the budget in what we feel is an adequate and fiscally responsible manner. The total ordinance amount is in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB twenty-four dash zero-one-five, and ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Again, our team is open and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who would like to give public comment on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, are there any? Seeing none. All right, I will open it up for questions. Councilmember Davis. Oh, please, there's no other lights.
You couldn't hear me? Pretty loud. I move that CB twenty-four dash zero-one-five, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, be approved on final reading, number forty-eight eighty-one, and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. Council will cast their votes. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment before voting on both this, as well as the following items, and my comments will cover, cover all of them. I think, as I've mentioned several times in the lead-up to adopting our budgets, this is one of the most important things we do annually, and I've got some significant worries here for the city, for the first time in more than a decade. Two thousand and twenty-four, while it's not over yet, and of course, the fourth quarter can bring different results, for the first time ever, the city, the city revenue, at least tax revenue, is very unlikely to not meet even the inflationary figure. As part of the things we're going to do today, we're going to approve a pay plan, which is about a four percent increase in the expenditures for, for employees in the city, but yet our revenue is not going to increase, at least our tax revenue is not going to increase by anywhere near that much. And that's just an obvious indicator of the inflation that the city is feeling. We're feeling it other places, too. So everything the city buys costs more, just like every citizen does, and every service we purchase, of which we purchase a lot, those are going up as well. And, you know, it's hard to tease out of it always, all of that stuff, but my guess is that we're not meeting inflation in any of those items. We certainly aren't in wages, but my guess is we're not meeting them in any, in anything else. So I have great concerns over that. I really think that, you know, if this were a business situation, you know, we would take decisive action and take it quickly. This budget doesn't really do that, but to the city, I mean, and that's no knock on the city team that's crafted this team that's crafted this budget. I think, you know, with the city council's decision on city management at the beginning of the budget process and halfway through the year, also with the requirements of governmental budgeting, it's very difficult to act as decisively as we might in business. I also think that, you know, it's easy to just come up with the idea that, well, more revenue is the answer, and that we'll just ask the residents for a tax increase. And I think that's probably coming at some point. But not only do I think that's very unlikely to happen, for the residents to vote a tax increase on themselves, I also don't think it's the best interest of Arvada residents. We have a number of residents who are, if not on the edge, they're near the edge of financial success or not. And higher tax rates only put more of those people on the wrong side of the edge. And so, while it might be good for the city to just try to get more revenue, I'm not so sure that revenue coming out of the resident's pocket is a reasonable answer here. To me, the reasonable answer here is the city really needs to evaluate everything that it's doing, how it's doing it, and prioritize those expenditures. And my hope is that the city council over this next year, so by the time we get to this budget process next year, has done that. And my hope would be that in every conversation over the next year that includes tax increases or enhanced revenue, that also an accompanying conversation of the other alternative, the other side of the coin with that, also happens. So if we are not going to do that, what are the things we would do to put us on a more stable budgetary footing? And so for now, I am going to vote yes on all of these budget items, although very, very tentatively. If I interpret the situation next year the same as I see it this year, I certainly will not be. So but for now, I will be voting yes, although I would encourage everybody to be very cautious in what things look like for the city going forward over the next year.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the preparation of a very thorough and complete budget. My question is for Mr. Archer, if I may, Ms. Haley. So in terms of increase in employee pay, about four percent, as Mr. Marriott stated, employees that are working in an enterprise, like water, wastewater, solid waste, those employees are paid through the enterprise, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that is a separate pot of money that we're talking about, the way other employees are paid. Then I'd also like to thank you for a clear and concise and actually optimistic ten-year forecast for the city. See, it looks like we are going to be sitting in a position where maybe a blip or two on the map is not going to knock us off our heels, but actually, we are in a position where we're going to stay in, looking very good fiscally. So I thank you for that ten-year forecast. So I just wanted to make those two clarifications, that it's not just tomorrow that we're looking into, we're looking ten years down the road, and we're sitting pretty. And we're probably in a position that's better than some or most cities here on the front range. And I really do applaud the city, you're spending dollars very expeditiously and in the right areas, and are very thoughtful with the way that we're spending dollars today and maintaining our infrastructure, as well as retaining excellent employees. So thank you so very much.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I was just going to say, you know, Mr. Marriott, I agree, we should probably have a thoughtful conversation next year about the other side of the coin. I don't think there's any harm in having that conversation. I think it, you know, we don't know everything that maybe we do, and maybe there are things we've been doing that we maybe shouldn't be doing anymore. That's up to you to maybe in the strategic plan, say, hey, is this widget thing something we should still be doing? Could be out there, and we just didn't know, and we're paying for it. So I support the idea of having that conversation a little bit more throughout next year and preparations of next year. And I want to just echo that, you know, this is a heavy lift to get there, to make sure we're good and we're comfortable, and that we are, I shouldn't say comfortable, but we are in a good place that allows us to see at least ten years out, and that we feel comfortable enough to know that we can keep paying the bills and paying what we need to do to provide the excellent services to our citizens. So I do appreciate that process. I remember when I first got on, it was the line item budget for Mr. Allard, and we've streamlined that a lot to where we are today. But I did want to show a little support to John about having the other conversation on the other side as well next year. But good job.
And I will note, council has discussed that we will be having that conversation. So that is something we already are planning to be doing, and I'm looking forward to having those conversations. And I'm also pretty proud of the team. You know, it's worth noting that in this year's budget, with inflation has skyrocketed, it has been quite difficult, and yet, we have managed to maintain our funding lines across every single department. I do know that the team has been crawling through and finding areas to cut, they've been finding areas of clawbacks. We have significantly ramped up granting operations and have, in fact, been awarded several grants, most recently over seven million dollars for reinvestment into Gold Strike Park. Congratulations again on that incredible win. And so I do believe we're already doing a significant amount of this work, and I want to applaud the team for that. Where those shortfalls have been is in those increases, those nice-to-haves. We want to be able to do this. We know we can make this better. And that is where a lot of our shortfalls have been coming in, in this current budget, is we're just not able to meet that next level of ask. But I'm very proud of our team for being able to maintain our current service levels that we have in this budget, and for the excellent work you did in preparing this for us, as well as all the work you've done over the years, as we have heard about, you know, these looming issues that could be on the horizon for us towards the end of this decade, and then what will we do about them? So thank you very much for that. And I will go ahead and call the vote on this one, then. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Ms. Davis, I believe you have the three resolutions associated with the larger item. Yeah, you just read each one. R twenty-four dash one one two.
So I move that, okay, R twenty-four dash one one two, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year two zero two five, R twenty-four dash one one three, a resolution-
Just one one two, we have to vote on each one separately.
That's right. I'm sorry.
All right. Be approved.
Thank you, council. All right, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Next.
I move that R twenty-four dash one one three, a resolution adopting the 2025 Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocating for specific projects in 2025 be approved.
All votes are passed. That passed seven to zero. Thank you very much. And the final item.
R twenty-four, I move that R twenty-four dash one one four, resolution adopting the pay plan for fiscal year 2025 be approved.
Thank you very much. That passes seven to zero. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the hard work. All right, next, I will open the hearing for CB twenty-four dash zero one six. An ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2024 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams County, ordinance number four eight eight two. Mr. Archer, do you have this item as well?
Yes, I'll take this item. Thank you, Mayor and council. Each year, we have to certify with Jefferson and Adams County our mill levy that will be used to collect property tax for the future year. This year, our mill levy has stayed the same, four point three one mills. Side note, we haven't changed that since nineteen ninety-four. The overall estimate is this mill levy will produce approximately nine million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars that will be used for the operations of the city. The Arvada team recommends that city council approve Council Bill twenty-four dash zero one six.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Archer, quickly, I have a quick question. Could you give us a quick breakdown? I think most folks don't realize property taxes are primarily for other services, fire, Apex, the county. And so would you be able to tell us where the city's ratios are with sales tax versus property taxes?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. So right now, from a property tax perspective, we collect four point three one mills. The average taxpayer in Arvada pays around ninety mills in on their property tax. So if you take that percentage out, about five and a half or six percent comes back to the city. Overall revenue in property tax, as stated, was just under ten million. Sales tax-wise, we collect just short of eighty-five million dollars. So a significant difference. Property tax makes up about nine percent of our overall budget. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you very much. Councilmember Ambrose, your light.
Following up on that questioning, how much does the average Arvada homeowner pay in property taxes to the city?
Great question. So the average home in Arvada, the numbers we've been using are a little behind, because we're one year behind with assessed evaluation. But we use the number of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the average home. Of that, we receive roughly a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
A hundred and seventy-five dollars a year?
Yes.
Okay, per house?
Per household that's paid to Arvada.
Great.
In property tax.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make that clear, because I know since the Gallagher Amendment, property taxes have increased, and a lot of people are upset about that, rightly so with the sudden increases, and just knowing how much the city, how much that actually affects you and what services we could provide is really important. I'd like to make the motion if there's no other discussion.
Absolutely. Councilmember Barbra, is there any other questions before we discussion? Seeing none, the motion is yours.
I move that CB twenty-four dash zero one six, an ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2024 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams Counties be approved on final reading, number four eight eight two, and ordered to publish by title only.
Thank you very much. That passes seven to zero. I will close the public hearing portions of this evening's agenda, and I will open our second public comment. We have one signed up. I believe it is Mr. Jim Morgan again. Please, Mr. Morgan. And once again, name and address for the record, just for the record.
Thank you, Jim Morgan. Seven five five one Oak Street. In recent Arvada report publication, the city council wrote about funding challenges ahead. The council wrote about closing the infrastructure deficit. The clear purpose of the article is to prepare citizens for a tax increase. Perhaps if the city council would have exercised more prudent spending, the infrastructure deficit would not be of such a concern. The six point three million dollars spent on the early college academy building, the annual compensation package for a homelessness program coordinator, the tens of thousands of dollars spent on homeless navigation center consultants, could all have been gone to addressing infrastructure. And that is just the beginning. For example, how much money is spent on nonessential city features such as new parks when infrastructure attention is lacking? How much money is spent on consultants annually when streets go unattended? Council members have communicated about how they love infrastructure, how infrastructure is a priority, how unfunded infrastructure is a crucial issue for Arvada. And yet, the same council members spend on poorly thought-out projects and nonessentials. The voters should remember. But I digress. It is important to review certain issues regarding the homeless strategic plan presented by Scott Shields and scope. Did Scott interview taxpayers, the people who are going to pay for this program? It does not appear that Scott interviewed organizations with substantive experience in treating the homeless. For example, reference to the Denver Rescue Mission is nowhere to be found. What is the recidivity of the navigation programs? If you do not know, or if the data is not available, why would you rush into a questionable process? Guiding principles. Apparently, the primary guiding principle for navigation centers is that everyone should have a safe place to call home, and that the strategy must be centered on a housing-centric process. Further, the principles state that homelessness is a community problem. Both those guiding principles are incorrect. While it would be wonderful for everyone to have a safe place to live, the guiding principle of dealing with homelessness is recognizing the need for individual accountability and structuring a plan that, once implemented, results in individuals taking responsibility for their own actions and moving toward independent living. Excuse me. Thus, homelessness is not a community problem, it is an individual problem which affects the community. You must not treat people as though they are dogs in an animal shelter waiting for a forever home. Leading people to accept self-responsibility is perhaps the greatest act you can perform on behalf of the homeless. Well, not you, but qualified organizations such as the Denver Rescue Mission. Finances. There's no estimate that I saw addressing the total cost of this effort, either in implementation or in an ongoing basis. I came up with over twenty cost elements primarily from the strategic plan. N-I-M-B-Y. Scott spoke of community opposition to programs serving people experiencing homelessness. In his July eight presentation, he referred to "Not in My Backyard." His approach was to have meetings to persuade residents concerning locating a navigation center in their neighborhood. Would it not be better to seek the input of neighbors rather than indoctrinate them to your viewpoint? Who wants another Old Town Arvada turned Skid Row in their neighborhood? Many would agree that Mission Arvada, if it were in a different area, would be a good idea. In Old Town Arvada, it has been a disaster. Compare Mission Arvada to the Denver Rescue Mission. The Denver Rescue Mission went into a Skid Row area to lift people out of their misery. Mission Arvada went into a vibrant residential, business, and family-oriented area and turned it into a Skid Row. I think everyone agrees Mission Arvada should be relocated, but not to another neighborhood. Conclusion. Finally, Scott states the biggest risk is doing nothing. That is incorrect. The biggest risk is doing the wrong thing. You need to thoroughly think through your plans, taking into consideration not just the homeless, but especially the neighborhood of interest and the citizens of Arvada in general. The city should strike that strategic plan and start over. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, do we have a none on Zoom? All right, then I will open it for reports from the city council. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So we are going to revisit the plan, just so the gentleman knows. We plan to do a study session and revisit the plan. So more to come. Around December seventh is the date we're planning. So I think we need to be clear that we're communicating that we are revisiting that plan to figure out what it should or shouldn't look like and revisit that. So more to come. If you haven't signed up for those emails, I definitely do, and we'll be communicating through that. The other things I wanted to bring up, one is the Mountain Rail meeting. I don't know if you were going to do that, but since it's kind of in my district, the Mountain Rail Open House meeting is October thirtieth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at Van Ayers Dell Elementary. We'll be sending out some communication around that as well, but it is open to the entire public, not just West Arvada, so we invite everybody. And then the last thing, I don't know, since we have a workshop, I think, next week, not able to, I'm wearing my Halloween trick-or-treat tie, just be safe with people being out walking, and the kids, and the parties over the next few weekends, to just be really aware, you know, it's dark early, and really try to be safe with those ghouls and goblins that are running around your neighborhood, and take your time driving, because the last thing we want to do is turn a good time of year for the kids into a horrible event. So I just encourage the public to just be a little bit careful with these early dark nights and the trick-or-treaters. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, so I wanted to take this opportunity of this time to set the record straight on something. And I want to be clear here, this is not to pick on anybody, but because my name was used, I want to make sure that the record is clear. And we heard it again, not with my name attached to it, but from Mindy Moore tonight, when she made public comment. But two weeks ago, at our council meeting on the seventh, Mr. Pfeiffer said, and I'm going to quote him word for word, "I will clearly point out, in 2021, March seventh, we unanimously voted, including Mr. Marriott, for a navigation center up here in the northern part, in agreement with Jefferson County." So after that, I was a little surprised, because I certainly didn't remember it that way. And I asked Mr. Pfeiffer what he was referring to, and he gave me the date of the meeting. And so I went and looked it up, and we re-watched the YouTube video- and went and re-watched the YouTube video and looked up the item. And what we had on March seventh, twenty twenty-two was a resolution to purchase property at Fifty-first and Mar- Marshall for a possible homeless navigation center. And that was passed unanimously, and the city then did purchase that property. But what we didn't do was we didn't vote on a resolution or an agreement to provide a homeless navigation center. Um, over the past couple of years, certainly we have worked collaboratively with both the county and our neighbors around here. And there's been lots of talk about homelessness and homeless navigation centers. But near as I can tell, the Council has taken no official action promising homeless navigation centers, uh, nor any particular homeless navigation center or even any particular strategy towards, uh, towards homelessness. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Because my name was used on that, I just want to make sure, uh, that, that people know my recollection was that I, I did not vote for a homeless navigation center. Uh, and I still didn't. I, I did vote for, uh, purchasing property for that pro- for that possible use, but that was, uh, that was it. So that's all I have for tonight.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Um, I just have a, a quick announcement about a, uh, community engagement opportunity that the city's doing at Lake Auburn Golf Course this coming Friday from ten to twelve. And so I encourage folks to come out and participate in that.
Thank you. And I also have a few items. I actually want to echo Mr. Marriott's comments regarding the purchase in twenty twenty-two, which is very much in line with where we are now. Um, we, he is absolutely correct. There is no definitive plan. We have a strategy, we, that is a citywide strategy. It's not in relation to a specific location. Um, we have ideas, but we will be revisiting that with input from all of you. So we do appreciate the residents coming out and talking to us and telling us about their needs because that really is an important part of all this process. So thank you. With that, um, we have a few other items happening in the city this week. Mr. Pfeiffer mentioned Halloween. I do love the tie, by the way. Trick or, uh, Trick or Treat Street in Old Town is this, uh, Friday, so that'll be a lot of fun. If you have Little Ones, I highly, highly recommend. It's one of my two favorite events of the whole year, and I love all the costumes. People get really, uh, creative with it. If you don't have Little Ones and you're looking for a fun girls' night, on that same night, Apex is having a witches' ball. So that should be a lot of fun. Um, if I wasn't going to be at Trick or Treat Street, I would be at the witches' ball. And then the announcement I have is that, um, as some of you may know, if you've read the Arvada press, uh, this, earlier this year, uh, City of Arvada was selected to the Bloomberg Harvard Cities Leadership Initiative. It's a, it's forty mayors from around the world. Um, mayors including Seattle, Philadelphia, Nashville are in this. We are in some rarefied air with this one, and so very excited about that. And we have been placed on their innovation track. And we've designated the goal. All of this, by the way, is paid for by Bloomberg Philanthropies and conducted through Harvard University, so this does not cost you or taxpayers a single dime. And this innovation track, we will be looking at, uh, infrastructure services on the Northwest side. So, thank you. With that Mountain Rail.
So with that, um, turn it over to Ms. Haley.
Good evening, City Council, once again. We do have a workshop on the twenty-eighth. We're talking about two items, parking management and our transportation system, sorry, transportation system plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right, then we stand adjourned.